Good evening and welcome to the December 11th, 2014 City Council Meeting for the City of Xenia. We've been an executive session since 5:00 PM and then a special session since 5:30 PM this evening. And we're now ready to begin our regularly scheduled 7:00 PM session a few minutes late. Our apologies for the delay. We will begin this evening with an invocation by Reverend Ken Moore from the Pleasant Grove Missionary Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Smith. If you would rise with me for the invocation and pledge, please. My apologies, as I scanned as I came back in, I didn't catch. Let us just take a moment of silence then, please. Councilman Smith, please, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. May I have roll call, please?
Vice President Long, Councilman Cowell, Councilman Lauterback, Councilman Smith, Councilwoman Mills, Mayor Bayless, President Engel.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Janie Mills tonight due to a member of her immediate family is ill.
Thank you very much. I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Mills. May I have a second, please?
Second, Mr. President.
Second by Councilman Lauterback. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long, Councilman Cowell, Councilman Lauterback, Councilman Smith, Mayor Bayless, President Engel.
Motion carried. Thank you. At this time, we have opportunity for approval of minutes. Minutes before us are for the November 25th, 2014 Executive and Regular Session. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Smith. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any discussion or question on the minutes before us? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Long, Councilman Cowell, Councilman Lauterback, Councilman Smith, Mayor Bayless, President Engel. Motion carried.
Thank you. We now have the opportunity for a special presentation this evening by Ms., and I do not wish to butcher her name.
It's Tarija.
Tarija Carr from Girls Rule. If you would step to the microphone, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Bayless, President, Council members, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is there a clicker for that? No?
We're calling in.
You get the IT director for the clicker.
Excellent. No one better. Okay. Good evening, as I said. Can you imagine being a young girl in this day and age, from bullying to social media to nightmares about friends at school that have basically hurt you, substance abuse, low self-esteem issues? School-aged girls are facing many challenges, as we all know. Sometimes their cries are silent, sometimes their cries are, you can hear them from a mile away. You just have to listen. In order to have a fighting chance, young women need and require guidance, advice, support, and a listening ear. My name is Tarija Hubbard. I know it says Carr. I recently got married. So my name is Tarija Hubbard. I'm the founder of Girls Rule, a nonprofit organization. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I'm a mother, a sister, a daughter, a valuable part of this community. I'm a social work professional. I'm an adjunct business instructor. All of these experiences and roles that I've had have caused me and allowed me to create Girls Rule two years ago, which I feel is a small gem in our community. Maybe unheard of until now, but we're ready, and we're ready to increase our enrollment and wrap our arms around more girls. To my left is Ramey Linton, grooms. She is a friend since the seventh grade, and she created this organization with me as well. She has a bachelor's in sociology from Central State University. She has a master's in human services, concentrating in counseling, and she's working on, in a few more months, she'll have completed a master's in educational leadership. So the culmination and the combination of our experiences with our children, our girls, other girls in the community, we feel like, once again, we can wrap these girls in our arms and give them a positive place to come and talk with their peers. Also, we have Kirsten. She's been a member of our group since 2012, and she's got some good things going on. A little shy, doesn't want to talk, so I'll speak for her. And she smiles, but she's done a really good job with us, and we'll tell you more about her. That's me. And next is Ramey. And we can flip it again. So our mission statement is to empower and uplift young women. We want to teach them to respect themselves, respect others, and respect the community that they live in. Okay? All three of those things. So who we are. I love this picture because the girls are smiling, they're embracing one another, and they are different. And that's what we're about, differences. We thrive on the different girls that come and talk to us and talk with their friends. No matter what race or background or issues that they have, we come together and we're able to do some peer mentoring and activities and really, really, just, you know, form a good relationship. So what we do? Many things. We have fun, of course. There are some tears at times. There's laughter. But through positive peer communication, conversation, and self-work and activities, our group is designed to help young women build their self-esteem. In a world today where some of the times that self-esteem can quickly be basically torn down. So what our group members do? They manage their emotions. They learn to manage their emotions and their energy. How they, I'm sorry, they learn how to manage conflict with their friends. They learn how to manage and use technology in a safe way. They learn how to maintain a healthy body image. Not just the images that they see on TV, not just the images that they see in magazines or in the videos or in music today. A healthy body image for themselves. They learn about bullying and the effects of it, and they learn about personal safety skills. So when and where do we meet? Right now, it's one Sunday a month from 2:00 to 4:30. I'm sorry, 3:00 to 4:30. We're trying to extend that. We don't have a place of our own, so we use the Xenia Community Library. They are our friends. They let us, you know, schedule the meetings, first or second floor meeting rooms, and we talk. And we have the girls bring friends, and they explore all types of subjects. And it's kind of led by the girls. We're there to facilitate, but we give them a platform to talk about whatever's going on in school, at home, in a confidential environment. This is the picture why. That was last week's meeting of a few of the girls. We do this because I think the picture just tells it all. Cohesion. All different types of girls coming together for the same cause. So one of our success stories of so many, Kirsten Rice, who's with us today. Kirsten went to Xenia High School, graduated recently, 4.0 GPA. She's a current WSU, Wright State University freshman. She's majoring in biomedical science. She wants to be a doctor, orthopedic surgeon maybe, or internal medicine. She hasn't decided yet. Kirsten, so many good things about her. She was such a leader for our group for so long, and now she's going to mentor other young ladies. But while in high school, she was in the student council, Spanish Club, Renaissance Club, National Honor Society, and then secretary senior year, okay, of National Honor Society. As she's gone on and gone to Wright State, she's received the Paul Lawrence Dunbar Scholarship Award and many others. Kirsten works part-time at Wright-Patt Air Force Base as well. So she's doing great things, and we're glad that she has. So in closing, just wanted to say, just, I can check this off of my things-to-do list. I wanted to bring about awareness. Like I said, I feel like we're a gem in the community. We're doing great things, and we do this on our own, our own resources. So what can you do as you walk away and ask, well, what can we do? Well, you can tell a girl. You can tell a parent of a girl. You can explore more, come see us at one of our meetings and just learn about us. Do we have a laundry list of things that we need? Of course we do. But just starting there, bringing about awareness and putting us out there is a wonderful thing. And hopefully, we'll be able to get a building soon and a van and do good things for these girls. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from my colleagues, please? Councilman Lauterback.
When you say you have a laundry list, if say somebody wanted to make a donation to you, who would they contact?
They would contact me, and here's my card. And when I mean laundry list, of course, I'd like to show these girls something they've never seen before, a show at the Schuster Center or the Victoria Theater, things that they've never done. We have etiquette dinners, showing them proper etiquette in a restaurant, maybe they've never been before. All types of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We've also taken the girls to feed the community.
Come on up. Come on up.
We've also helped take the girls to feed the community because a lot of times, the teenagers that we have are kind of self-absorbed, and we want them to look outside themselves and see that there's others out there who are in much need of more than a phone or iPad. You know, there are people out there who need food and coats, you know, and just need someone to show them love. That's what we, we take our girls to do that as well.
So when asking the things we need, I mean, we just collected toothpastes and toothbrushes for Dayton Area Chapter, American Red Cross, emergency housing here in Xenia. We're going to deliver a basket to the kids that are in housing around Christmas time and with toothbrushes and toothpaste and some fun things too, but some needs. So we take donations of all kinds.
And I want to commend you because even in Xenia, teenagers this age are, have, some of them have low self-esteem.
Absolutely.
There's been suicides in the city of Xenia. There's suicides all over the country, and all they need sometimes is just somebody to talk to.
Absolutely.
And I commend you for taking the step forward to help people.
We appreciate that. I'm very much into making deposits and not withdrawals within any of my relationships. And with these girls, it's just teaching them that too, you know? Just a listening ear, exactly what you said, you know, the recent situations that just happened in our city with the young lady. I often think, you know, maybe if someone heard her scream, like I said, whether it was silent, sometimes there's just signs, you know, but maybe that could have been the difference. We don't know. But there's so many other girls out there, and that's the demographic that we've chosen to serve.
And we want to prevent that. We have to be, we have to be a listening ear for everything. Of course, if we feel like they're going to harm themselves, we're not going to keep that secret. We have to tell people. That's just, you know, somebody involved, a police officer or a doctor, of course, the parents first. Our main thing is to keep them from harming themselves when it comes down to situations like that. Or if they have friends who are dealing with situations like that and they don't know what to do, come talk to us. Teach them to talk to an adult, you know, so they can help and protect their friend as well.
And God will bless you for it, trust me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a general question. How long has your organization been in existence?
Since 2012, January.
2012, okay. And have you reached out to any of the number of civic organizations and such throughout our community as well?
As of yesterday, I've sent out a lot of letters and things like that. We were trying to do it on our own, just kind of grassroots, homegrown, you know, girls from our churches, girls from, you know, our families, things like that. But I just see it getting bigger, and there's a bigger need. So yes, definitely.
I know of any number of people from the city who are members on a number of the civic groups that I'm sure those groups would probably enjoy hearing from you as well about what difference you're trying to make for the young ladies of the community. So I just offer that as another opportunity for you to reach out and find resource from people who have that same collective desire as you do.
Absolutely.
Which we try to get, you know, hand those out to the schools too, but I think we have to go through a certain channel in order to do that. So, and we're working on that.
And Kiwanis Club and, you know.
Exactly what I was thinking of, yes.
Absolutely. We've done that. We will. I sent out packages yesterday. I'm like, okay, I can't, being an army of two is difficult with masses out there. So I said, we need to pull in some help, so definitely, and we'll keep doing that. So thank you. Just real quick, 2014, 2015, what we've decided to do, we did a little bit last year, like I said, make Christmas baskets for the shelter for the kids, but we're going to feed, go to the community meal at United AM and assist with that. We had a really good time last year. And just do some more civic, you know, giving back as we're, you know, going to do that. We make cards for the elderly at different nursing homes and deliver those on different holidays. So we're trying to just develop well-rounded girls and just give, you know, I've been so blessed, we've been so blessed, so just basically putting into them because it's important, because we don't want another situation like before. So.
It's too late for this year, but we have a $10,000 community funding program.
Okay.
And next year, you would, when is that, Brent? When is June?
Okay.
I would certainly apply.
Definitely. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to ask her, thank you for being here. If someone's watching this or watches the recording, I know we have your card, but if they want to contact you, how would they do that?
Absolutely.
And do you have like a Facebook page that people can?
We are developing that. My sister actually is developing that for us, but the best way I would think right now, I'm just going to give my personal email right now, and that's tarija, T-A-R-I-J-A, the number 41674@yahoo.com. Definitely.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to speak for these two. I know Ms. Hubbard was an excellent parent, and so I know her to be a good person, and this is really a plea to other parents out there who have young people, and certainly to Ramey, who I kind of mentored along the way, who has a background in ministry as well. So you are two wonderful people who are perfect for this. And Kirsten, I watched her grow up as a little kid, and I would, if you would, just go to the mic and just tell us something.
Yes, thank you.
Something about the program that really has inspired you or made you feel good or made you touch others.
You can't say no to the mayor.
Right. I'd say more than anything, the community service aspect is, you know, she was saying earlier, a lot of teenagers are self-absorbed, and, you know, it's a helping hand. It teaches you, hey, there are bigger issues in the world other than, you know, social media or yourself even, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilman.
Thank you, Kirsten.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kirsten.
And to Kirsten Rice, I talk to the school board members all the time, and I've been harping on it for a couple of years now that we don't showcase the success stories that come out of our high school, whether it be, you know, the graduates that go on to, you know, the Purdue's or the, you know, MIT's of the world, but she's going to Wright State, has a, wants to be a doctor, 4.0 GPA. So obviously, you are a success story out of Xenia High School and will be a successful story into the future, I am sure. So I commend you for that, and, you know, anytime, you know, we can feature those success stories, we need to broadcast those to the whole public to try to elevate our own school system.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. I just want to say, you know, thank you for the suggestions, and I'll take those to heart because, you know, you all are the pulse of the city, and so I'm just excited. And I hate that it took me so long to get here, and I need to learn that not everything's on my shoulders. We've got community, so thank you once again.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, are we having a tree committee? Yes, we are. Thank you very much. We are having a presentation by the tree committee on the Fall Foliage Photography Contest winners and runners-up.
Excuse me, did anybody, did Michelle bring in the photo, the certificates?
They were right there.
Oh, they're here. I have comments. I think so, yes. Oh, I didn't realize these were here, ladies and gentlemen, sorry. I wish to thank the City Council, so allow me to present the winners of our Fall Photography Contest at this meeting. I didn't, I have to sign them yet. I didn't realize these are what the certificates look like. So we had about 35 entries for the competition, which was Fall Foliage, but a few had to be disqualified because they're outside the actual city limits. This is just for the city. The township, I'm afraid, doesn't count, sorry. And a big thank you for all those who participated, and all the photographs were beautiful. Oh, we've got them. Good, good. So reflected the splendor of fall in Xenia. And we had a judging, a group, and they found it really difficult to determine a winner in these. So we have the first place, a title "Life Loads By," submitted by Jacqueline Ofray, and the location is Shawnee Park. Let me sign this. Have we got Jacqueline here? Oh, good. Great. Let me just sign this. Right, if you'd like to come forward, Jacqueline. Thank you. And I don't know if everybody can see that. Well, you've actually got it there on the screen. Wonderful. Right, the certificate there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. We've got them on the screen there. Right, second place, we actually had two photographs that were judged for second place. And both are good. And one was North Detroit Street looking south, and then the other one was the bike path, you know, beside Shawnee Park there. And they're both were taken by John Faulkner. And John, if you'd like to come out, and I'll sign the second one as well. All right, John. We've got two certificates there. And then for the third place, we have Home Avenue in front of the Legacy Center there, submitted by Jeremy Nicholson. So is Jeremy here tonight? Jeremy Nicholson? He didn't come. What a shame. But that's the, that's the third place for top photograph, and we've got his certificate here, so we'll get that to him. And by the way, all the photographs that were submitted become the property of the City of Xenia, and the winning photo will be on display in the lobby of the City Hall. So thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, for the presentation. We've enjoyed it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I'd like, I know Janie's not here tonight, but I'd like to thank you guys for that competition. I lucked out. I got to be one of the judges for that.
Oh, you did?
And that was hard. I had to use my staff to help. So congratulations that they were really good entries. Very good.
And I want to thank Michelle, the wonderful job she's done in these photographs, the certificates, and everything she did there, ready for us. Okay?
Thank you. And sir, a special thanks to the tree committee and Bracca at large for running this activity, recognizing, and I know the citizens have heard it many times over, we do not have a Parks and Recreation Department any longer in the city. All this work is being done by volunteers, and as you can tell, they are running an excellent program and are creating excellent art now for the city to display. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
This time in the agenda, we have a public hearing, a modification to an existing mixed-use planning unit development to relocate an existing social service organization from 1855 Bellbrook Avenue to the existing building at 469 Dayton Avenue filled by the Community Action Partnership. Mr. City Manager, would you like to introduce, please?
I will, and then I'll kick it over to Mr. Forssner for additional comments and any questions. Tonight's public hearing pertains to requested changes at 469 Dayton Xenia Avenue to facilities located within the former Green Park Plaza and is subject to restrictions as a planned urban development. Per Section 1282.09A1 of Xenia Codified Ordinances, any new development or reuse activity on this site constitutes a major PUD modification and requires approval by both the Xenia Planning and Zoning Commission as well as City Council. The applicant wishes to relocate Community Action Partnership from its current facility at 1855 Bellbrook Avenue to this location with operations that would include offices and meeting rooms for their daytime counseling and referral service for individuals in need of financial assistance. City Planner Brian Forssner's work with CAP through their planning process. Mr. Forssner, I could certainly answer any questions regarding the proposed modification. Upon completion of the public hearing, staff does recommend introduction of an ordinance modifying the existing mixed-use PUD. And Mr. Forssner, any additional comments?
I think you covered everything.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. I will open the public hearing then, and then invite anyone who wishes to speak for this modification to please step to the microphone, provide us your name and address, limit your comments to three to four minutes, please.
Three to four minutes. I can do quicker than that. My name's Jim Phipps. I'm from Cedarville. I am the Chair of the Advisory Council for CAP in Green County. Kenton Hill is here with me tonight. We have outgrown our facility in terms of the work we do. We coordinate with about 17 different social service agencies to help the low and fixed income and the seniors in Green County. We also coordinate with Montgomery County as well with the regional development there. We're wanting to move into the building. For those of you that have been here long enough, the old Rynx property. The rest of you are too young for that, but I remember Rynx. But we find that this would be an excellent use for that property. Our plans are to rehab the parking area. One of the questions that always comes up is about access. There's a 40-foot path behind the building. It's just overgrown. We will be removing most of that vegetation except for leaving a buffer to the residential area behind, so we'll not be encroaching on anybody there. And we are inviting at present one other social service agency to join us in the building that has been with us out where we are. But we provide all kinds of services, tax help, heat help. For the Miami Valley, our budget last year was over $13 million, and we want to keep that happening here in Green County. We've got a staff of 14 right now, and we've got room for about 11, so. Plus, this would give us much better access to where our clients are. Right now, we're out on Bellbrook and the old John Deere dealership property, and it's very hard for them to get there. This would be very much more convenient for the people that have to come to or wish to come to see what we do. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that might go beyond that.
Just for full disclosure, I'm a member of the Board at CAP.
I didn't know if we could say that or not.
But anyway, this organization does a great service for the community, and this will be a much better, in my opinion, location. It's where Curs, Social Security, I think Lee and Betty's carry out those three, right across from Cox Football Field. So that's where, and that's an empty building that will be renovated.
If you've noticed, it's falling into some disrepair. That's our first goal, is to get the exterior cleaned up and then begin working from there. We've got to get gutters and things back on the building, get the property cleaned up. But we hope by March to be able to make a move and to make that a very nice, attractive property again.
Thank you, sir.
I have a 295 Adram Road right behind you.
Yes.
Interesting what you were going through the tree, but there's a problem with these trees.
Ma'am, can we, can we hold that till the next offering for speaking? Then you can come up, provide us your name and address, and enter your comments in for the record.
She's asking a very good question about that, though.
I, no, I just want to keep the meeting in scope. Anything else, sir?
No, I think that's what we have to say tonight. We just need to get it rezoned from the PUD to a B1 so that it has permitted use for what we're going to be doing. We will not be encroaching on your properties there, though.
Thank you very much.
My name is Sheila Lavelle, and I live at 295 Adram Road. And about the meeting, I was interested in those trees because when
the meeting, I was interested in those trees because, um, when DPNL comes back, they don't, we have a lot of electrical wires over, so when DPNL come back in our yard, I know, uh, they don't trim them straight. They go in and cut a big V out so that the wires, it'd be a long time before they have to cut them again. But that causes a lot of problems on our property and also behind in that alley because the trees fall over. And it's very messy, and we have to spend a lot of money keeping them cut back, you know, in our yard. And I was just wondering, by this picture we had got in the mail, uh, it goes as a fence line right down those trees. So I wanted to know, like, were you planning to cut them down or just cut them back on your side or, because it will, you know, it'll affect our property too?
Brian, can you address?
Basically, our code will require them to cut back enough so they have at least twenty feet of width in the driveway. Uh, we also require that there be a buffer area. Um, so we've directed them to retain enough vegetation to keep that buffer effect along there, but just cut back enough to, um, to provide enough maneuvering space. That, that driveway is actually, uh, there, there's actually, I believe, about forty feet between the building and the property line, so there's more than ample space for the driveway and for allowing vegetation. So, so the intent is they would leave some vegetation on their property as well as on your property.
I just wanted to find out, because a, a few years back, they came through and parted a line down the fence line. They cut the trees in half, and it would, and they cut the trees in half, and over the years, they grow back. But if he is planning to cut the trees back really, you know, to our line, it would be all right, instead of coming back and cutting them into a V because that's going to cause problems again for you and us. We had to pay a lot to keep those trees done on our side of the property.
Seems to me that just some conversation amongst yourselves, property owners, the enterprise, and, and our code enforcement and, uh, planning area need to, need to take place to, to address those concerns. I don't know that we can address them here for you tonight.
Okay.
Uh, but certainly some collaborative conversation should be able to yield a, a satisfactory answer to all, I would hope. Counselman?
Yeah, I will concur. You know, DPNL, they don't have arborists. They have hatchet men. They just go in and just, they're going to cut the trees off the lines. But I, I can attest, I, I, this organization here will work with you. So I don't, I don't think you're going to have any problems. And what DPNL does, it's just, they're ugly the way they, and they, they cause problems also because they don't, they don't, uh, trim them properly, so.
On the house on the corner, they cut them straight, and the house next door, they cut them straight. But when there was an R, an R property, they can even V them out, which makes the trees fall over both ways.
I understand.
And DPNL does hire private people, not the City of Xenia's, not in any way responsible for that. It's, they contract out for that.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to come forward and speak for the modification? Seeing none, would anyone care to come forward and speak against the modification? If so, please step to the microphone, provide us your name and address, limit your comments three to four minutes, please. Seeing none, if anyone would like to speak neither for nor against this modification, please come to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments three to four minutes, please. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at this point in time and ask for an introduction of the ordinance from one of my colleagues, please.
Someone?
So introduced by the Vice President. Thank you very much. At this time, we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone would care to come and address the Xenia City Council on a particular issue, you're welcome to do so. Please step to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments three to four minutes, please. Seeing none, moving to reports of committees. Uh, Mr. Vice President, Planning and Zoning, please.
Thank you. Since I was not at the last meeting tonight, I'll deliver the report for November's Planning and Zoning meeting. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission met on November sixth, uh, two thousand fourteen, seven p.m. in these chambers. They had three items on the agenda. The first was they held a public hearing and then endorsed the, the rezoning of the property we just heard about, so I won't go into much detail on that. Um, the other two items was they approved a, a certificate of appropriateness to allow construction of a rear garage door at one one three South Detroit Street filed, um, filed by Narrow Path Plumbing. Um, that organization is moving into, what was the furniture store that it was in?
Blox.
Doms.
Or Doms, yeah.
In Doms. Um, and we're taking over that property, and they're installing a garage door on the backside for access of their equipment. They're going to be running a service, uh, service facility out of the back and then retail, right, Brian, retail in the front to support that operation. Then they also approved a certificate of appropriateness to allow construction of an ADA compliant ramp in the front yard at one four three East Marker Street filed by the, uh, filed by Green County Department Development. This was, um, basically a former home that the county held. I think the children, Children's Services or, what is it? Mediation. The, the mediation services are there.
Visitation.
Visitation. And, uh, so they needed ADA compliance, so they will be installing a, a uniquely shaped ramp on the front of that building to, uh, to allow ADA compliance and still try to keep the architectural standard of that building.
What was that address?
One?
One thirty-three.
One forty-three, East Marker. They actually have to start the ramp on one side of the property, come across the sidewalk, and get up to the other side of the porch, um, to get, to meet that grade and wheelchair. And that is it.
Thank you very much. Anything for Vice President Long in Planning and Zoning, please? Seeing none, while Councilwoman Mills is not present, uh, for a review from, uh, Board for Recreation Arts and Cultural Activities, I actually chaired that meeting in her absence earlier this week and can provide at least a partial, uh, report for that, and she may wish to augment it, uh, at our next meeting. But, uh, reported there was that the youth basketball program, uh, continues to grow. Uh, this year, there are approximately thirteen teams that will be participating in that, that activity. Uh, the Tree Committee, which we just saw a few moments ago, uh, has concluded its, uh, uh, competition with, uh, with some excellent results that the City of Xenia will, will, uh, gain great benefit from, from, uh, display of that, uh, that winning photograph. And finally, the largest item discussed was, uh, this upcoming weekend, Hometown Christmas downtown, beginning at four p.m. and concluding at seven. Uh, some of the highlights of many is that, uh, Santa Claus this year will not, repeat, not be at, uh, Toward Independence. He will be at Xenia Station. So if you're looking to have, uh, your young ones visit Santa Claus, uh, he will be at Xenia, uh, Station this year. Uh, there will be a variety of entertainment, uh, venues going on. There will be some singers at the courthouse steps, I believe, towards the beginning of the program at the four o'clock hour and continuing somewhat later, but not, uh, throughout the entire evening. Uh, but then there will be other entertainment venues at both Toward Independence, uh, and Willie's Sports Bar, including, uh, the, uh, Xenia High School Jazz Band and Ensemble, and a number of others, I believe, there will also be, uh, at the library. And Mayor Bayless might even be singing there, as I recall, with, uh, the AME Choir.
Right. They didn't put us at Willie's Bar. Appreciate it.
But the bottom line is, is that Xenia is a very thriving community. This, this group, BRACCA, uh, does a great deal for the community in terms of, uh, organizing and facilitating activities. Uh, and if we can knock on some wood and, and hope, uh, we're going to have a somewhat warmer, uh, weekend than, than last year, which was not great at all for, uh, Hometown Christmas. Uh, so please come out and, uh, and join us at, uh, Hometown Christmas this weekend. Next on the list is Councilman Smith, Traffic Commission, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd like to go back on BRACCA just real quick.
Yes, please.
You know, I've been on council. This is my fifth year. And, and Councilwoman Mills has chaired that four out of five of those years, and once while she was president of council. And, and then when I chaired it one year, that, that was the longest year of my life. I, I spent a lot of time with that committee because they're, they're very active. So, um, I'd just like to thank her on, on record for everything that she's doing. Um, on Traffic Commission, we did not have a meeting in December. Uh, due to a lack of agenda items, we are planning a meeting in January. Um, I would like to report, you probably got to mention, the Kinsey Road, uh, North Detroit intersection is, is almost completed. Um, that was an ODOT project, and, um, of course, uh, I saw a lot of crew out there last week, but, uh, I'm glad to see that traffic's moving and, and that the times they were working on the signals was during non-school traffic, uh, time. So that's a great thing there. Um, I do have, we do have a couple appointments tonight on traffic. Are we waiting to do all the appointments later, or am I supposed to do that now?
You may appoint now, or you can catch into the items from City Council and Mayor, whichever you prefer.
Um, I'll just go ahead and do my, my share. Um, Mr. President, I, we have two appointments to Xenia Traffic Commission. Um, I'd like to make a motion, uh, on both of them. The first one is the appointment of Jeff Fott to fill the vacancy. Um, his term, uh, will run until October twelfth of two thousand eighteen. Um, the other is a reappointment of Sarah Mays, uh, and her term will also expire October of two thousand eighteen. Um, Sarah Mays has served on the commission, um, since February two thousand thirteen, and she's currently our vice chair, which, um, she'll run the meeting in my absence, which she's had to do once or twice. So, um, I would like to make a motion for those to be appointed at this time.
Thank you very much. I have a motion on the floor to appoint the two members' names to the Traffic Commission with their, uh, respective, uh, term dates. I have a second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kow. Any discussion or question on these motions, please, or this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And that's all I have tonight on traffic. Thank you. Thank you. Anything for Councilman Smith and Traffic Commission, please? Seeing none, Mayor Bayless, Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to call on, um, our city planner, Brian Forshner, who'll give the report. I was not there because I had to preside over our regional mayors and managers' meeting, and I missed a record-setting meeting.
Yeah, you have about a half hour.
Limit your comments three to four minutes.
That's not per item. Thank you. This, there was a special meeting of Board of Zoning Appeals on December tenth, um, with seven items on the agenda. The first was a variance request, uh, to allow reconstruction, replacement of two non-conforming roof signs at Pizza Hut at three fifty-four West Main Street, each of which was, uh, forty-three point eight-five square feet. That was approved. Uh, that's basically redesigning the logo of their signs. Uh, the second item was an administrative appeal and variance request at one eleven North Allison Avenue, uh, for First American Loans, essentially allowing an auto title loan service, which is considered a pawn shop operation in our code, less than the required five thousand feet from another similar establishment. Both the administrative appeal and variance requests were denied in that case. The third item was a variance request to allow a, an eight-by-twelve-foot accessory, uh, storage shed in a rear yard utility easement at eighteen eighty-four Wit Street. Uh, that variance was denied. The fifth item was a request to allow non-continuation of a non-conforming boarding house at one fifty-eight East Third Street, uh, which was denied. The, um, I'm sorry, that was the fourth item. The fifth item was another request to continue a non-conforming, single-family dwelling at two ninety-six Dayton Avenue. Um, that one was approved. The sixth item was a, uh, the, the conditional use request for four eighty-six Cincinnati Avenue was withdrawn because it was found not to be necessary. Instead, it was just a variance request to allow a, uh, a wheelchair-accessible ramp in the required side yard at that forty-six Cincinnati Avenue. That variance request was denied because the property owner had other code-compliant options for, um, satisfying that same need. Finally, uh, the final item on was a conditional use request to allow the new City Hall building at one oh seven East Main Street. Um, and that was approved with conditions. Uh, the conditions included to require city staff to park in Lot Four, uh, continue to explore partnership with Green County to utilize their adjacent parking lot as additional, uh, public parking or municipal building parking to offset parking demand, um, to allow for a potential future interconnection between the city lot and the county lot, um, to consolidate all of the parcels on the site into one, uh, prior to zoning permit approval, and then for additional conditions required by Planning and Zoning Commission, which required a certificate of appropriateness for the development. I don't know if you want me to go over that or not.
Um, just to say that the Planning and Zoning Commission, our last meeting, did approve that certificate of appropriateness for the unanimous decision for the City Hall building. I'll cover that in my report next week.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm real sorry I missed that. Mr. President, would you like me to go ahead?
Please do.
Okay, um, there's the appointment of David L. Harrison to fill the vacancy that expires in April two thousand seventeen, and then the reappointment of Matthew Funk. His, his term expiration date is December nineteenth, twenty eighteen. And he has served, um, the board since his initial appointment, February two thousand nine. So I'd like to ma, make a motion to, um, appoint and reappoint. Should I do each one, or?
Uh, you can do together. We just did the, for the Traffic Commission.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I have an appointment, I have a, have a.
You do.
Have an, motion for an appointment of these, uh, two individuals, uh, with their respective, uh, term dates. Do I have a second, please? Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Excuse me, aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Since we're somewhat out of order on this, uh, Mr. Vice President, would you care to, uh, make the motion for the Planning and Zoning ones at this time?
Sure. I am pleased to, um, as the other members are assured, to finally fill these vacancies on our commissions. I have an appointment and a reappointment. The first is an appointment of David, uh, I think it's Leach, to fill a vacant term begins on January first, two thousand fifteen, his, and will end on December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. He's a, currently, right now, a professor at Cedarville University, and his background checked in the, uh, Comeback Satisfactory. And then a reappointment of Matt Bennett with a term expiration date of December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Bennett has, uh, served on our commission since his initial appointment, February twenty-fourth, two thousand eleven. Um, at this time, I make a motion for that appointment and reappointment.
Thank you very much. Have a motion to appoint and reappoint. Uh, any, a second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kow. Any discussion or question on this motion? Councilman?
Just a general comment. I, I know I can speak for the rest of the council. We really appreciate the volunteers that step up for these committees. I mean, it's, uh, it takes a little bit of time out of our, your busy schedule, but we couldn't do it without you, so, uh, it's great. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comment, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
At this time, we'll move to items from City Council and Mayor. We've taken care of a large balance of what was, uh, programmed for this. I had, I have two other items to, to add to that. Thank you for the prompt, Mayor. Uh, the first is a, a reappointment to the Xenia Civil Service Commission, uh, of Mr. Jeremy Andricks, to a full term with an expiration date of December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Uh, Mr. Andricks has served on the commission since his initial appointment on November twenty-sixth, twenty thirteen. May I have a second, please?
Second, Mr. President.
Second by Councilman Lauterback. Any discussion or question on this appointment, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And finally, I have an appointment to the Green County Combined Health District Board. Uh, Ms. Denise Percival has served the City of Xenia with distinction on the Director of the Green County Board of Elections, Mrs. Percival submitted her resignation to avoid conflict of interest. It is the responsibility of the city manager to recommend a replacement to City Council for its final vote for the city's representatives to this board, and after engaging staff and council on possible candidates, the city manager is pleased to recommend Ms. Elaine Hughes to fill the opening and serve the citizens of Xenia on the Board of Health. It should be noted that Elaine's daughter is an employee of the district. However, after consultation with our law director, there appears to be nothing prohibiting her from serving in this capacity as long as she recuses herself from any decision-making that would directly impact her daughter. Ms. Hughes has extensive experience in the healthcare field and is an active, well-known and highly respected member of the Xenia community. She has expressed interest in serving in this capacity without reservation, and it is our pleasure to recommend her to fulfill the vacated term representing the City of Xenia on the Board of Health for Green County Combined Health District. So at this point, I would make a motion to appoint Ms. Elaine Hughes to fulfill that vacated term. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Anything else from my colleagues this evening under items from Council and Mayor, please? One item.
I know all those are job. I'd just like to thank the city clerk for taking all these appointments all at one time, and we had a lot of vacancies, and thank to the newsletter and the social media thing, we were able to fill a whole lot of those. She processed more appointments in the last week than she probably did in the last three years.
And I would concur. Our city clerk does an outstanding job of keeping all of us well-informed with these, and certainly has done an exceptional job with all the appointments that she's taken care of in the last short period of time. At this point, sorry, Councilman.
Thank you very much. Last Friday night, I attended the high school boys' basketball game and was approached by several citizens inquiring about our work session last week. I had asked a question. Thirty-two percent of the money to pay for the new projected city building will come from the water and sewer rates, and I was asked the question, what that dollar figure actually was of the hundred, or of the $450,000 per year? And then I was also asked how that would impact the township water rates. If we raise our city water rates, are we going to raise the rates for the township residents?
Well, on the, on the, on the question, I don't have, not totally off the top, but I, I think the, the annual amount of debt service that we're talking about, it was around $488,000 for the first 10 years. Three hundred and twelve of that, in my recollection, would be general cap dollars, so the remaining portion would be your water, sewer, and sanitation, which would amount to, doing the math, $175,000 a year. Obviously, if we increase the rates for water and sewer, obviously, that would affect all our water and sewer customers, which would include, include the township. I think what I had mentioned is the projected amount that we're looking at for a typical water user, not a township, but a typical inside-the-city water user, would be an additional $2 a month or $25 a year for the water, sewer, and sanitation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else, please? Seeing none, moving to reports of city offices. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council. First this evening, staff is pleased to request authorization to enter into a contract with Compass Point Planning in an amount not to exceed $74,185 to provide assistance in rewriting the city's zoning and subdivision regulations. As detailed by the city planner in the agenda report, approving execution of a contract with a recommended form will allow us to initiate an extremely important process that should yield positive results for the business climate in the City of Xenia. Updating our zoning and subdivision regulations is an ambitious goal and yet a critically necessary step toward creating a business-friendly climate in our community. Process will pursue, the process we will pursue for this code update will be lengthy, likely taking up to a couple of years, but as necessary as we desire to be comprehensive and forward-thinking as we look for healthy stakeholder involvement to ensure buy-in from both our residential community as well as our commercial citizens. Staff request authorization to engage the contract and request appointment of a council representative to the technical review committee to initiate the process.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into this contract, please?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please? Second by the Vice President. Any discussion or question on the first motion? Councilman.
Just a comment. I think it's long overdue. Some of those, these zoning codes go back to 1968, and the subdivision regulations go back to 1991, so I think this is long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion or question on the first motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. In regards to an appointment, do I have any volunteers from the City Council? I have not had anyone write to me indicating an interest.
I'll do it.
Thank you. Any other individuals interested?
I'm interested, but I was also selected to be the planning and zoning representative, so it depends on the assignments after the new year, so.
So would you like to stand or defer?
I'm just going to defer at this time.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Motion then is to appoint Councilman John Kow as the representative to the Technical Review Committee. Second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilman Lauterback. Discussion or question on the motion, please? Roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
I'm staying.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next this evening, staff is requesting emergency approval in ordinance to appropriate additional funds for two purposes. First, in order to fulfill anticipated obligations for legal service fees associated with representation of two ongoing human resource matters, additional funding in the amount of $15,000 is requested in line 101-1005-53111 to cover these expenses through the remainder of the year. Specifically, services are needed for assistance with contract negotiations with the new aspect clerical unit and to serve as counsel for the city for impending grievance arbitration with the IAFF. Second, staff is requesting appropriation of funding in the police and fire, water operating, and general funds for various safety-related purchases. Like last year, the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation is providing a rebate of annual workers' compensation, premium dollars, to the city due to better-than-anticipated worker compensation fund performance. Again, like last year, staff is recommending that a portion of these rebate proceeds be put into purchases that further enhance staff safety and performance. These additional purchases, as detailed in your agenda report, total $21,800 bring the total requested appropriation in this ordinance to $36,800. Staff request this ordinance as an emergency to ensure prompt access to these resources for these impending needs.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency for the supplemental appropriation?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on this motion, please?
I've got one.
Please.
The rest of that rebate that we got from workman's comp, where did we appropriate that?
It'll be receiveded back into the funds in a, in a manner that's consistent with the contribution form, the serf, I don't want to say this, the funds from which those contributions were made for the appropriated service, for the appropriate services related to those employees. It'll be receiveded back to those funds. For example, firefighters, police officers, that portion will be appropriated back to the 270 fund.
Got it.
Water service workers, back to the 611 fund, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other discussion or question, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Finally, this evening, staff requests introduction of one ordinance to amend Xenia Codified Ordinance 8 Business Regulation and Tax Code Title IV Taxation Chapter 880, Income Tax Section 880.24, Income Tax Rebate Program, and two motions to approve amendments to the city's revolving loan fund program and the city's Ohio Enterprise Zone Negotiation Guidelines. Not going to detail all the specific changes, as they're fairly lengthy to go through in detail one by one, but they're all outlined in the reference materials in the agenda report tonight, and essentially provide enhancements to the scope of awards that can be, incentive awards that can be provided to those programs. Mr. Brodsky's here, and he and I can entertain any questions the council has on the changes or the impacts of those changes relative to the program performance.
Thank you very much. May I first have a, first have an introduction, please, of the ordinance?
So we're introduced, Mr. President.
Introduced by Councilman Lauterback. Now, second, a motion to approve the above changes to the city's revolving loan fund programs as recommended by the Economic Development Advisory Board.
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Second, please?
Second.
Second by the Vice President. Any discussion or question on motion? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And finally, a motion to approve the above changes to the city's Ohio Enterprise Zone negotiating guidelines as recommended by the Economic Development Advisory Board.
So moved.
Moved by the Vice President. Second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on this motion? Councilman.
Okay. Just since Steve, you're here. If, say, this new recreation center coming to town, would they qualify for any of these funds, like for equipment, or?
Well, are you speaking specifically about the Ohio Enterprise Zone, or any of the?
Any of the above, yes.
Okay. They could potentially, certainly for the revolving loan fund, because they're creating jobs, they would be eligible for that. For the enterprise zone, the entertainment center would not, because OEZ only affects new real estate, and since they're using an existing building, obviously, we can't abate on existing, and that's against state law. The movie theater, to the extent that it's, the building would be torn down and built new, there is a potential, but we also have to balance that abatement with the potential of a TIF, and you really can't do both, because you can't say, well, you don't have to pay your property tax, but then use the property tax to help pay debt service.
So we don't know which would be more advantageous, advantageous for the?
Based on the numbers I've seen, I think the TIF would be far more advantageous.
Okay.
And the TIF may be necessary in order to engage the project as a whole.
Yes.
Which will, you know, ultimately yield, I think, a better result for the theater, obviously.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman.
Thank you very much. The Economic Advisory Board did look over all three of these changes and were unanimous in the changes to be made. I did receive a lot of good comments, actually the next day, from two members of the board, stating that they were very happy to be a part of this discussion and felt it was the best meeting that we had had. So I believe that's what we have that board for, and they did unanimously approve all these changes, and felt that they all made sense for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Just a couple of brief updates. Again, as mentioned earlier by Councilman Smith, the traffic lights up at the Kinsey are open, I shouldn't say open, but the improvements are, have been activated and the old lights are down. We still do have that fiber optic line that's running across the intersection. It may be some time before there's a final solution to that issue. The intersection will remain functional and operational. At some point, they'll have to address that issue, at which point, there may be some interruption. I anticipate that to be many, many months down the road. It'll be a coordination again between ODOT and I Utility, and, you know, so I'm sure it'll be an inconvenience to us all, because that's kind of how they roll. I'm sure it'll be mentioned again here tonight, strong encouragement for folks to participate in Xenia's hometown Christmas. I know Councilman Lauterback's a champion for the concept of buying local. This is a fantastic opportunity to support our downtown businesses. I'll be carting my family out there Saturday, everything from visiting Santa Claus to dropping some coin at Torrey Lane's, my wife's favorite downtown shop. So again, want to encourage folks to do that. One final update, we are running a little bit behind in a couple of our public service projects due to that big snow we had last month, so Leaf Collection's running a little bit behind. Some of the other typical fall projects that we would undertake are a little bit behind, so the weather does look good for the next few weeks out, so hopefully we'll have an opportunity to catch up.
Thank you very much. Anything for the city manager this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items this evening, first of which, I'm asking for award a bid for fiber construction services for a fiber optic line from Shawnee Park to the Xenia Service Center, and awarding the bid to Quantum Network Integrators of New Bremen, Ohio for $47,700. You may recall, we extended fiber to Shawnee Park a couple of years ago as part of the upgrade to the camera system at Shawnee Park. This is basically a next phase in that project, goal of which, to do what we can to minimize the cost that we have for these types of services through Time Warner. As you can see, we're anticipating a fairly significant operating cost reduction over a 10-year period. Our IT Director, Mr. Cardenas, is here if you have any questions on this item.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, first, to award the bid for fiber construction services?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman, was it Lauterback?
Lauterback.
Lauterback, okay. I just heard it out of the corner. Second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kow. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
You stayed all this time.
Would you like to talk about fiber just for three to four minutes?
Don't tempt them. Second item, scheduled bills in the amount of $569,498.45.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to pay our bills?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Councilman.
Just a comment, Mr. President.
Right, that's right.
We have one thing on here, $183,000 for a new ambulance. We bought a new fire truck recently, bought a new ambulance, kind of moving our fleet of cruisers over to the SUVs. You know, a lot of these expenditures, they're all tax dollars at work, and might be nice if we take and feature some of these things. I know it's a long way off, but at our first Fridays maybe one month, you know, and, you know, let the public see what they're actually spending, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on, especially, you know, this is a new style ambulance for us, you know, new fire truck, new cruisers, and let the public just see what we're spending their dollars on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or question on the motion, please?
I think you did do that for the last new vehicle.
Yeah, we've done with both public safety and public service. Between, over the last couple of years, we do the touch truck type of.
That is a nice thing to do.
I know we had BACOs out there.
We did not do any vehicles with public safety this year, and I think it was because they were the last month and we were concerned about some weather issues and whatnot.
Thank you. Any other comment, please?
Just one.
Mr. Vice President.
To make one. You know, I had a lot of conversations this week about people coming in on the city hall, but mainly about economic development, but there are some things that kind of get buried in here and the public don't hear about, like the loans that pass through us for new businesses, like a new restaurant here in town. There's a few thousand dollars in here going to the StarMax Group for research and work looking into the possible, possibility of a new movie theater. And of course, the money going to gain, and they made a presence here almost at all at council meetings through this contract, and the work they're doing there from the economic development, marketing side. So there is money going out, I might counsel on Lauterback's point, never enough is going out, but I appreciate seeing those in these bills.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion or question, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Anything for our finance director this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening, it's the second reading of a resolution amending the Xenia Employee Benefits Policies, EBM-3.06 Longevity Benefits and EBM-3.10 Health and Dental Insurance and Improving Employee Benefits Policy, EBM-3.13 Rehired Retirees. This was originally introduced by Councilman Lauterback.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to amend EBM-3.06 Longevity Benefit, and I would like to tell you why. We only have a few part-time employees in the city of Xenia, and how many, is this paid yearly, if I understand it right? So average, do you have a breakdown of how many years the employees have been?
With this policy, if this, if the policy were to remain as is, we would have one part-time employee who would be eligible, and we have, would have two others who, because of their circumstance, either they're not covered by a contract or whatever, they would be eligible once they reach that five-year threshold.
Okay.
So right now, it would apply to one employee.
And it'd be a fair statement, it's not going to break the budget, but if we gave them one, if we gave these employees longevity?
I don't know how to answer that. Given our work session today?
No, 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 this is, I mean, this is more, okay. And I mean, this is just, and I respect all my colleagues if they don't support this, but this is just the first. I believe in taking care of employees, especially part-time employees who don't make what the full-time employees make, and it's just a, it's just a, something to show them that we care and we appreciate their service. So that's why I want to amend, amend this to, I think the language was, to abolish longevity benefits or award that, something to that effect. I would like to see the longevity benefits go forward.
For part-time.
For part-time, yeah.
Mr. President, just as a point of clarification, speaking on behalf of my staff, I don't know that we're necessarily for or against it. I think really the impetus behind the introduction of this was to eliminate the administrative process of tracking that. So if it, if it means anything, you know, there's no significant financial implication to this. It is a nice minor benefit to those employees who are eligible. We introduced it not because we didn't think the employees deserved it, but really because it's the process of having to track that over such.
And I did not mean to indicate that at all, so that's just.
Thank you. I appreciate, have appreciated the conversation on the issue and respect my colleagues' points of view on this. For myself, I am fairly neutral to the proposal, but I will be abstaining on it as my son, William, works for the Public Service Department, and I do not wish to appear to be in any conflict of interest status on this particular issue.
Mr. President, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion or question on the motion, please? Vice, Mr. Vice President.
How many employees does, since there's change in appointment status, is because a new union is being formed, that wouldn't apply anymore anyway? So how many employees would affect that's not? How many, let's just say positions?
Currently, there's one part-time secretary position that this would affect, however, that position is included in the new AFME group. So then there are two, I'm pretty sure my numbers are correct, because I double-checked the HR director last week. I think there are two additional positions that are part-time at the water treatment plant that this would apply to. Neither of them are currently eligible, because they don't have the full five years in, but if the, if the amendment were to be approved and then sustained in the additional vote, then those employees would be eligible once they reach that five-year point.
I mean, it's just my opinion that we have part-time personnel for a reason, and I don't necessarily support continuing longevity pay. It would be the time, in my opinion, to get rid of it, because it's not, it will not impact anyone immediately, once the contracts go into place. It made down the line. I just hate, it's a minor amount, it's to show appreciation, and I completely understand that, but if it starts costing us more money to administer the program than it is to give it out, maybe we need to find another way to reward longevity. So that's all, thank you.
Any other discussion or comment, please?
Okay, so I want to clarify, a yes vote on this is just the amendment?
Yes.
Just the amendment? Which is what Councilman Lauterback just changed.
Which would, yes, which would allow for the part-time to continue to receive.
Then we have to vote again on amended policy.
Right, because you do have an item that's still on the agenda that was introduced.
Okay.
Correct. This is just the amendment you're voting on right now.
Okay. Got it.
Any other discussion or question, please? Councilman.
Just one. I mean, I originally was, said no, that I was, I was kind of against longevity pay, I mean, but, I mean, after talking to Councilman Lauterback, you know, I, I'm going to support it just for the fact that it is a very nominal amount of money, and I don't really think that it really costs us administrative time to track it, really. I mean, it can't be that difficult.
I guess my concern is it'll, it would be taken care of during negotiations anyway?
For the, for the secretarial position, the receptionist position, which is part-time.
And that's the only one?
That's the only one that's incorporated into the new AFME unit.
But this is not part of that.
And, correct. So in other words, that is a point of negotiation, longevity may or may not be included, depending on the outcome of those negotiations for that position. There are two other current part-time positions at the water treatment plant that meet all the qualifications under the existing policy.
Non-union.
That, that, correct, that are non-union, that would be eligible.
But they have not met the threshold yet for receiving.
Comes of duration of service, yes.
So all, all the full-timers receive longevity pay?
Not all of them. All of the non-union do.
Well, that's one, all the ones that are in contract negotiations?
They are eligible, if they are eligible, based on their time of service.
Correct. So, okay.
Mayor, there's no guarantee that these people will be taken care of during negotiations. I mean, I, if you, I mean, am I correct?
There's no guarantee the longevity will be included in, in the final contract.
Yeah, yeah. Like, like City Mayor said, it's a point of negotiation, so.
Just one, just AFME that has the longevity still. I believe the existing AFME has longevity, but the other buring it's no longer have longevity.
Yeah, I would add the service under those.
I think they added it back, yeah.
Any other discussion or question on the motion, please? Roll call.
Vice President Long.
No.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Abstain.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Councilman, it was your introduction.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you wish to motion the entire introduction that you had previously made?
Yeah.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kow. Any discussion or question on the total motion now?
Were there other, I'm sorry. Were there other things in here, because I missed a meeting when this was introduced? Were there other things in there besides longevity pay for part-time?
I believe there were.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Abstain.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. President, nothing further this evening.
Thank you. Anything for our law director this evening, please? Seeing none. Moving to summary of action items, any updates, Mr. President, or, Mr. President, I'm the president. Mr. City Manager, I am losing it this evening.
Is that a promotion?
Come right on.
You know the answer to that one.
I do, I do.
The pay is a little less.
A little less, I think, so we might have to negotiate on that. Just one item, as promised and as requested by council, the law director, finance director, and myself met to look at implementation steps relative to the motions passed by council at the previous meeting. In discussing with the HR director, the best approach to incorporate this, we realized that there, with the existing policy structure, it made sense to just add to that structure rather than create another policy instrument, and so our recommendation is to make an amendment to policy EBM-3.39, the Code of Ethics. This would, as indicated on page three of the document we provided in the agenda report, would add items 11 and 12, and then some clarification. I think it's fairly straightforward, we can answer any questions. Essentially, tonight, we wanted to provide this in follow-up, get any feedback. If this is amenable to council, we will proceed then at the next meeting to bring this back to, to be approved by motion to add to the, I think it's by resolution, to be added to the employee benefits manual policy.
Thank you. Any questions or comments at this time for the city manager on that issue, please? If not, I encourage my colleagues, we have a little bit longer break between this meeting and our last meeting of the year, set for the 29th, correct? Please, if you could, by the middle to latter part of next week, to give the city manager an opportunity to take into consideration your comments, please get those to him as soon as possible, so that he can prepare the item for consideration at our last meeting. Anything else? Any additions or subtractions from my colleagues? Seeing none, reading of communications and discussion. Councilman Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just also a reminder, Hometown Christmas, Saturday, it's slotted from 4:00 to 8:00, but there's things actually going on throughout the day.
Yes.
And a reminder is Xenia Area Community Theater has the performance of The Elves and the Shoemaker, and they have a couple matinees. They added one, I think, for Saturday, and then they have one Sunday. So there's a performance Friday, two on Saturday, one on Sunday. Also, there are things to do in town that don't cost money. Another activity this weekend, if you go to Hometown Christmas Saturday, you can go to Green County Parks and Trails, Santa and the Park on Friday, and that's 6:30 to 9:00. It's the next two Fridays and Saturdays, that's at James Ranch Park across from the Fairgrounds, and there's free activities and wagon rides there. And I'd like to just wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and we'll see you on December 29th.
Thank you very much. Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, let me hold you, sorry. Councilman Lauterback. I was just going down the line.
That's okay. I also want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and as City Manager said earlier, if you can, just, just shop Xenia, if you, just buy one present, just help our local merchants, because small businesses are really struggling, so. And also, I hope everybody, if they haven't already learned the true meaning of Christmas, that maybe this year is your year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kow.
Thank you very much. I'll just wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mayor.
Okay. There was a ribbon cutting at Orchard Lane, and it's now opened up again, and so that was a beautiful sight at one time, and so it will be again. And then I want to congratulate the teachers at Warner Middle School, where they had their first honor society program, and that's new. And I was one of the speakers at the first induction, so it was just a real nice program, but commend that faculty and staff. And then we congratulate those who have worked extremely hard on trying to get our Carnegie Library registered and a part of the National Register. Traveled with Barbara Bradfeut and Josephine Reno, who was a writer, and we traveled to Columbus last week, and right away, they awarded us that recognition and commended the, the writing of that proposal, and so hopefully, something good will come of that. It's a beautiful building, well, it used to be, there's a lot of work that's needed. But boy, when you saw the pictures of the inside and the beautiful dome and all those things, it just really took you back and made you think, you know, it's worth saving. So we appreciate that. We want to thank Bradca, were they responsible for Frozen, the movie Frozen that was shown to the? Yes. Yeah, and so I was able to drop by there very briefly, but had pretty much a full house. So thanks to the parents and students who supported that. And then I was a starter once again for the relay race. This group of professionals from the Cincinnati area come up every year in the winter and do a run from, start at our Xenia station, and they run to Loveland, Ohio in teams, and there's probably about 50. And they had a new person who was a doctor, a heart doctor, so that was encouraging, that you'd have somebody, a heart doctor, run with you. But anyway, it's a real nice group, just in case, yeah. And this, oh, I do want to commend our city manager. I really do support the reports that you give, the updates that you give for us to read, because sometimes, you know, we don't really, in between meetings, we don't know what's going on out there, so that's, that's very, very helpful, I appreciate that. And then again, encourage everybody to come out this weekend. There's going to be bike riding, and I guess I'm supposed to ride a bike at some point. There's going to be a group of bike riders, and you're supposed to have your bikes decorated, so. I put air in my tires, so that's my contribution for decoration.
Winter air?
Right, winter air. So, but a lot of things are happening, so please come out and support that, and it's going to be a great time, and the weather's going to be very cooperative. So have a wonderful holiday, a Merry Christmas, and we'll see you on the 29th.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
The, the library, is that still owned by Green County?
It is.
Okay, is there, are there any plans for renovation of that?
Oh, they threw out a couple plans that they have gotten along the way. Someone mentioned something about iCloud, and I'm not really sure what that means.
One of the potential uses that's been tossed out there would, as a secondary use, would be for, like, large, large-volume digital record storage, so cloud-type storage. I can also add that Mary Crockett's, this is one of, kind of the backburner projects that she's, she works on in between some other things that are going on. So the city has had an active role in that conversation. I actually talked to Alan Anderson last week, I believe it was, and while the commissioners are generally not very thrilled with the idea of this designation, I did suggest to him or request of him, you know, whether or not the commission would be interested if an appropriate economic model could be introduced, whether there might be the option of gifting that property to the appropriate project, and he indicated, you know, he couldn't speak for the whole commission, but he would certainly support that concept. So we continued to look at something that has an economic model that'll work to allow for the renovation.
That's such a beautiful building, and I would
That's such a beautiful building and I would hate to see it, I would hate, I would like to see it put to use.
I would too, I would too. And Barbara Bradfeut, who's told him, she said, "I'm 85 years old and I've been working on this for 20 years." I mean, and they said this was a perfect example of what they're trying to say around the country, you know, around the state. Carnegie Libraries and arts fits that mold, so.
Thank you.
I wouldn't mention mold.
Yeah, I was just thinking that.
That form.
Yeah.
Mr. Vice President, thank you. Just one item, I just want to commend two teachers, which is Ms. Stivers and I want to screw up Dr. Zawaki.
Zawaki?
Zawaki, last name there. They took it upon themselves this year to take 114 elementary students on evenings and weekends to form Xenia's Elementary School Choir and you can hear them perform this weekend of Hometown Christmas at 4:30. My daughter's in that choir, so I got to hear it twice already, but it was pretty neat to go into the Board, the Board of Education meeting on Monday and as you come through the doors, you were greeted by students singing and it was a very, very large crowd, I mean, probably 210, but I whispered over to our, as elected officials, we like seeing large crowds for good reasons. So come out and see them and just want to commend them on their time. I think they partially have to be nuts to take 114 students and get them to concentrate on the same thing all at one time. And I think Ms. Stivers probably at this point would agree. You can see them at 4:30 on the courthouse. Come on, on Saturday.
Thank you very much. I would add just some emphasis for The Elves and Shoemaker, it's their last weekend of performances and will be ExAC's last performance, obviously, this calendar year, but they will have three more shows continuing out through the new year. And please, just a put for supporting your community theater, they're there doing an excellent job, providing entertainment at a very reasonable cost and providing an arts outlet for the community as well. And I would just add some congratulations along with the mayor. Of course, the Junior Honor Society was stood up at Warner. I was pleased to be at the Xenia High School's induction of the National Honor Society as well sometime last week. Last week's kind of a blur, but I'm just very pleased and I don't know if she's listening or not, but my daughter was one of the inductees, so I just wanted to pass along my personal message, as I've already told her before, of Carolyn, you are an outstanding young lady and congratulations to you and to all the new members of Xenia High Schools and Warner Junior High's Junior National Honor Society. So without further ado, if there's nothing else, I would look for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.[1729.33]